Okay, so these are debate students, right? And these are our candidates, Dr. Terry Ward and Judy Wartick. Hope I got that right. And I'm Joslyn Rivard, I'm the VP for the PTA Board. And there's Amy and Jan, they're on. And where's Rachel? Rachel's back there, she's on, she's gonna be timing.
She's got raffle tickets.
She's got raffle tickets? If you didn't get one, please get one. And she'll be timing question and answer. Hey Brian, you're here, this is perfect! Jump in, jump in Brian! And, uh...
Do the wave.
This is Mr. Doherty, the speech and debate coach for Northgate, true? Okay.
That's true.
And if anybody has a question that doesn't magically get asked by these guys, I think we're just gonna do raise hands and ask, because we don't have any index cards. If you have a secret question you wanna ask, I guess I have paper, and you can do that. But that seems silly. You wanna do the pledge? Okay. Is there anything I'm forgetting? Introduction, introduction, debate students, Mr. Doherty, time. Questions and the pledge. Alright, ready guys? Let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, I feel like I left something out about the timing, like how long we're all gonna be here, so maybe you wanna cover it.
No, it should be about 40, 45 minutes, 40 or 40 seconds.
You guys feel ready? Okay, alright, let's do it. Oh, I was in this row, we're not gonna make that one. Do you wanna do an opening statement?
Sure.
There's only two of them, so what?
Sure.
Do you want to?
Whatever your pleasure is.
Okay, I'm not in charge of this.
I'm just, I was literally pinch hitting for Brian who was running late, so...
Yeah, I've found...
Well, can I say my pledge?
What?
Do you wanna do your opening statement?
Yeah, two minute opening statement.
Sure.
I don't know that I need this one from... It is on. Alright. Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Wartick, and I have been on the board for the previous three years. My working background has been in the North Kansas City School District. I started right out of college many, many years ago, and completed 31 years with the North Kansas City School District as a second grade teacher, fourth grade teacher, fifth grade teacher, and some combination classrooms along the way in the elementary level. And then I was principal at Lakewood Elementary and Meadowport Elementary. I retired about 10 years ago, and three years ago decided to have a little extra time on my hands and thought it was time to give back to the community that had given me so much. So, it has been a wonderful experience to be a part of the Board of Education for the North Kansas City School District as we look to the future, and things are growing again. We've opened up two new elementary schools here very recently, one just this year. The renovations at North Kansas City High School is adding on additional classrooms there, and looking forward to managing the growth that is happening in the Northland as the North Kansas City School District seeks to expand and shine once again.
Thank you, Judy. My name is Terry Ward. I am completing my 24th year on the Board of Education. It's been a labor of love, and it is a passion for me. It's a passion that has not gone out. Said I will no longer seek to serve on the Board, but I'm out of energy and out of passion to try and make it better. Over that period of time, we've dedicated a lot of effort to making sure that the district does start to shine again. When I came on the Board, it'd been 17 years since we passed a levy. We failed our first one, and after that, we have not failed one since. And so, we needed to restore the confidence of the community and the schools, and their vote would indicate that we've made good progress. Our last bond issue passed with 84% favorable, and that is a blessing. And I view it as a thank you for the work we've done to set a vision and that meets the needs. We've listened to you, and we're trying to do what you told us you wanted. Performance of the district is high, 97.4 puts us very strong. We're not supposed to be scoring that well for a district that's dislarded with these demographics. But the Board committed and has hired a superintendent, three times, that I'm a, I'm part of, that said we can educate every student. No excuses, there's no reason we shouldn't be getting close to 100 or hitting 100. And we have backed off on that, and we're doing it. We weren't there 10 years ago, we are there today. And we plan to be there tomorrow, the next day, and the next day. The big challenge right now is growth. We were anticipating 80 to 100 new students this year, we got 380. So basically, four years worth of growth in one year, and that is a mixed blessing. It's fabulous to have the growth, it's an affirmation. We hear from many parents, the reason we're growing is, they moved in, is that they moved into our district for the schools. And so that's wonderful to hear, but it also puts tremendous pressure on the district to have the adequate resources, classrooms, teachers, and to continue to handle that growth. The demographer has decided that his estimate was wrong for last year, and that he has new data. And instead of projecting 100 new students this year, he's projecting 250. So, if we do that for another year or two, we will be in the building business again. So, it would be my honor to continue to help lead this district and to serve you. Thank you.
Okay, so now you guys are gonna do your questions, right? It's the next thing. So, what was it? We had allotted like a minute and a half for answers, but you said they can go a little longer? Because there's only two.
Yeah, there's only two. I mean, you know, I'm not gonna put my hands up and wave and tell you this is...
I'll kick him under the table if he talks to you. Oh, but there was just no skirt.
We'll look away at you.
Alright.
Alright, my name is Joshua Potrats, I'm from Staley High School Debate. In terms of time, I'll knock once, once you go over time, so, I think. And for questions, I'll start off with Dr. Ward. In our strategic plan of 2017 to 2022, strategy one, action seven, the district advocates for promoting pre-K accessibility. However, the district opposes the Kansas City Universal Pre-K proposal. How can the district best promote pre-K accessibility otherwise?
Believe it or not, I'm going to start by saying thank you. I appreciate the question, because the message is important. We definitely do support and seek the opportunity to provide pre-K. And as we continue to seek resources, it requires a couple of things. It requires more teachers and more classrooms, and that's a business we're going to be in. The existing pre-K proposal is not one that meets some of my standards and some of the district's standards. Some, one of the district's standards is it's not efficient. We work very hard to make sure that every dollar you entrust to the school board is used as well and as wisely as we can, and serves as many students as possible. The proposal that will be on the ballot next Tuesday does not meet that standard, and that's a problem. So, there are also significant issues. It's a tax on the whole city, and probably less than 10% of the students who could benefit from it will be in our district. And it precludes any student who doesn't live in Kansas City from accessing it. So that's about 20% of our students that wouldn't be able to access it. So to tax all of our patrons, have 20% of our students excluded from the service, have, if, basically, they think in the first year they'll collect 28 million and service around 700 students, that's about $40,000 a student. We educate students for about $11,000. We don't think that's efficient. They're building up some infrastructure, and I understand that. But if they would work with the schools, they wouldn't need to be, have redundant administration, redundant curriculum development, and those things are not how, I believe, patrons should be taxed. They ought to get full benefit for what they do with their hard-earned dollars and turning them over for education.
I agree with everything that Dr. Ward has said. One thing that I might mention also is that the district would not benefit, the parents would not benefit from seeking any of that money who currently have children in our preschools, because our preschools are half-day programs. The mayor's proposal is for full-day programs only, and ours are running efficiently. Half-days, we have morning and afternoon. So if we were to modify our plans to fit what the governor or the mayor is trying to do, we would have to stop serving half of the students that we currently serve. And with the Action Curriculum Pact half-day that they have, they are getting just as much as if they were in a full day, spread out with rest time, snack time, additional playtime. And our half-days are just as efficient as the full day, but our parents would not be able to apply for any of that funding.
Hello? The NKC School District has fairly innovated in creating new opportunities for secondary students. How do you evaluate the effectiveness of these opportunities of off-campus programs such as the CTEC, NCAPS, and early college?
Are you asking how we ensure that they're valid programs?
Yes.
Conversations we just had at the Board meeting, Tuesday night, I had to think. Was that last night or the night before? Tuesday night. The district does provide a wealth of opportunities. We have our early college program, we have the construction program through Maple Woods down in the Front Street campus. We have our Platte County CC program, we have Northland CAPS. And there are a long list of things that students can choose from. All of these have their governing bodies and boards with them also to ensure that they are following the protocols and established curriculum that they have set forth. A lot of our district employees work very closely with those programs in ensuring that the students are getting the benefits of the college credit and technical skills that those organizations offer.
I would agree with all of that. The, the, the challenge is, we talk about being a champion for every student, and it's hard to find a program that fits every student. What we have tried to do is to seek out excellent programs with excellent outcomes so that where we do invest the extra resources to provide additional programs, the students can benefit richly. I guess what I look at are things that are indicators to me is the number of college credits that our students graduate with, and that's been an ever-increasing number for the last several years. We doubled the number of students in our AP courses this year, over the last two years, I should say. We opened the new Construction Academy, just as a, not to speak ill of anyone, the people who wanted that to happen, had been working with Kansas City for three years, who couldn't figure out how to do it, they came to us, and within three months, our excellent staff turned it around. And we have 20 students that enrolled in it in September of this year. And at this point, we've got 16 of those, and they will graduate and with their class, with an associate's degree, accepted into an apprenticeship program. And so a program like that with real outcomes and provide real futures for our students are what we will seek every chance we get. And regardless of, and, and, and I, and that's an example of one that may not necessarily be college prep, but it's career prep. And we're really trying to look at both of those dimensions. I fully expect part of those students will go on to engineering school, they'll still be college prep. But we want to try and provide career opportunities for every student that aligns with their personal aspiration. And so that's part of the reason we have a number of programs. We're undergoing right now a rethinking to make sure that we indeed have non-re redundancy and have maximum efficiency. And we will be looking at those very carefully over the next year.
I'm Marion, from North Kansas City Debate. So, speaking of being a champion for every student, being that we do have one of the most diverse school districts in Missouri, what changes could our district make to not only be accepting of other people's races, religions, and sexualities, but also celebrating those differences?
It's a priority the Board identified several years ago, and we started working on it. And we really didn't feel like we were making good traction. And in the last year, we've redoubled our efforts, and we feel like we've really dedicated significant resources to developing the administrators and the faculty and the staff, and to make them sensitive or improve their sensitivity, make them more aware, make each of us more aware. We all have blind spots, they vary from person to person. And to increase the awareness of those blind spots, and at the same time, provide tools so that we become more aware of them and eliminate them in ourselves to the extent we can. It's a priority. We want every student to have the opportunity that they deserve, and if we are skewed in our offerings, we're trying to fix it.
I have been a member of the Student Diversity Council for the last couple of years, not only a member, but a Board member attending those meetings, and have found that the students embracing the diversity training and things that they are practicing on a monthly basis, and taking them back to their schools, and talking with their leadership groups, with their teachers, and helping to get the ideas spread throughout the students. And also, the district this year with the staff development have really concentrated on the equity piece to, with the staff. The staff has brought together a group that has planned out strategic plannings throughout the school year. They've been delivered by teacher peers, they've been delivered by leadership members, all different aspects of the district, taking a close look at what we truly believe, biases that we unconsciously might have, and acknowledge them, and embracing the uniqueness and diversity that our district does have.
My name is Lily, and I go to Northgate Middle School. And my question is, how will you make sure our school district is more connected to the community?
Could you repeat the question?
How will you make sure our school district is more connected to the community?
More connected to the community, okay. Strategically, with the feeder patterns, that was a big piece behind getting the schools all to fall in line. We saw when Staley was built, and how the middle school and elementary school, that they had everything feeding into Staley, bring that community together, and wanted to replicate that throughout the district. So, personnel at the district office worked very diligently in trying to find where those boundaries should be to align the schools. It was pretty strategic with the high schools and middle school, but then where do you divide those lines with the elementaries? Because we have a lot of overlap with elementaries. When I was at Lakewood and Meadowport both, when it was time for the fifth grades to go to middle school, we had two different schools coming in because the fifth grade class split and went to several different schools. And we did have some going three directions. So, to build that feeder pattern and bring the communities together, the parents, PTAs are very strong in the elementary, and it gets more activity-driven as we get towards middle school and high school. But being able to bring that even the parent groups together, just not the same students passing through the schools, but the same parents that are working together to stay together and support the schools all the way through the high school years.
In addition to working with the parents and, I'm willing to call the neighborhoods, the other dimension that we've worked very hard in connecting with the community is with the employer community. And some of the programs, the Northland CAPS program, talks about partnerships with 300 businesses in Kansas City, mostly in the Northland. If you talk about our school-community partnership program, we have about 400 businesses who've made a commitment to work with schools in the district's specific schools or multiple schools. And that provides resources and connections that pay benefits. The construction trades program I mentioned has ties to the labor community and the apprenticeship programs. And so one of the things, as we've crafted many of our senior programs, we've looked at not only what education can we provide, but also what connections can we provide for our students so they've already got tentacles reaching out into the community and relationships beyond what they have inside their family. And we feel that that's important. It gives our students an important resource, and it gives the community a better appreciation for the quality of students and the quality of education we're providing them. So, a dual benefit.
Hello? I've been doing awesome on time, by the way. It's raised on in like 1:32 minutes. Just letting you guys know. Good responses too. My next question is, given the court injunction on House Bill 1413 regarding union recertification, what steps should be taken to ensure fair contracts between teachers and the district? Or what are some of the best ways to support teachers in general?
It's a good question, and one we've been working on for the last year. It's, personally, I would say it's an unfortunate piece of legislation. We have had, and we've been there, had a wonderful relationship with our teacher organizations over, I can only attest to 24 years, so I can't go any farther than that, sorry guys. But we've had a positive relationship. We've used a process called, what we call CTTN. But the easiest way for those who aren't aware of it, it's a way that the administration and the teacher leaders sit down together and help plan the future, particularly as it relates to the quality of time in the classroom and working conditions. We've done that, we've done it successfully, we've shared goals, we've shared beliefs, and it's worked exceedingly well, in my judgment. We've, we may not see eye to eye on every issue, but we have an honest, respectful discussion. And even if we don't get to the same answer, we'll, we'll understand each other better, and maybe we can find the answer the next time we do it. Because the legislation precludes us from doing that. I quite frankly felt a little bit naked going into our contracting this year without teacher input. We want that, we want a collaborative environment. And without that teacher input, it felt a little bit hollow to me. And so, I'm hopeful that with the representation vote that is planned, whenever the courts get out of the way, that either with that or with some of the discussions going on in Jefferson City now to change the legislation in one way or the other, we can get back to a collaborative environment where we can maximize, in the eyes of those who are living it, the value that we can provide to teachers and the best views of our patrons' dollars.
Don't know that there's much more I can say to that, other than CTTN stands for Collaborative Team, teacher negotiation, and it truly has been a collaborative team for many years. In the 90s, maybe even late 80s, beginning in 90s, this district started looking at shared decision-making and teacher training along those lines with facilitators within the districts, and that has evolved to the CTTN process that we have right now. As Dr. Ward said, it's unfortunate that the legislation has come to be because it's fixed something that wasn't broke in our district. But obviously, it was in some of the other areas of Missouri. But for the fact that it's kept us from doing business the way we always do business and have felt very comfortable in doing that, has been an uncomfortable feeling as a Board member that we don't have that negotiation, teacher collaboration team there that we have had in the past.
I don't think I said it the first time, but my name is Billy Tolbert, and I'm from Oak Park High School. My question is, what do you believe to be the biggest challenge facing in the next few years?
Dr. Ward alluded to it in his opening statements, didn't allude to it. He said, "We are growing." We grew four times as many students this year as anticipated, anticipating 250 next year. And within a couple of years, we're going to be in a position where we're gonna need an additional middle school. And another elementary is probably right on the heels. And with that comes funding, additional bonds. We've been very successful with the bonds. And along with additional schools, we were able to reshuffle some things and not have a tax levy increase for this last opening of schools. But that's probably something that's going to be in the foreseeable future as we continue to grow and need additional staff to cover those positions that are going to be made by this expanding Northland.
I agree with that. Probably the second and third priorities, I would identify, the second one, particularly a couple of people sitting on the front row that lead our educational activities. I'd be perfectly satisfied when we get 100 on the map, so I don't want to set any real expectation. Some districts do it, and I think it's our turn. But when you look at our student performance with a 97.4, we are doing well. We're doing very well. 100 may be beyond aspirational, but that's okay. So I think student performance is something we've got to look at. I mean, we talked a little bit about the alternative opportunities for our seniors and our high school students. We, it's, it's a process. Our students are changing, the world is changing. If we keep teaching the way we taught in 1950, we're going to fail, regardless of what level of excellence is achieved. And so to continue to evaluate, are we doing, are we providing the right educational solution as efficiently and effectively as we can, is something that is an item for me of constant vigilance. And I think it's one we're doing well on, and we've got plans to continue to do well in the next year with some of the further studies and evaluations. And I think the third thing for me is, I was lumping under a thing called student support. We've had a program that we've used the last several years called AVEN, which helps our students with their educational attainment and to set them up for success, particularly when they may be coming from a household that has not gone beyond high school with their education. But I also worry about the increasing levels that are reported of student suicide, of student depression, of, I worry about the level of angst we see in the community at large. And I think one of the things we've got to look at is, what can we do to support our students in a holistic sense? And in dealing with what they have to do to live in this world. And we supported the new Children's Fund that passed in Clay County, and it's providing a million and a half dollars to us to augment what we're doing with counseling services, and what we're doing with dealing with students and helping them succeed. And we're doing it by reaching out again to the community and looking at who the community partners are, that we can draw, advise the utility. partners are that we can draw, utilize the utility, and not provide redundant resources when there are people in the community that know how to do it and would be glad to serve our students. And so by taking that approach, I think those are the kind of the top three issues on my list would be growth, continuing student performance, and student support.
So the question I asked about diversity and how we can make change on accepting our differences and celebrating them, and also the question that Willie asked about how we can become more connected to the community, were both about things we can do in the future, but I noticed that your answers were things we've already accomplished or things we're already doing in the status quo. But the point of our questions were to ask you how you can make change and also maintain the progress that we've already accomplished to take steps towards the future.
Let me make sure I understand. You're suggesting we're working on it, but the question is, what else can we do? What can we do to sustain it? What can we do to advance?
Yeah, like in terms of the diversity one, I know that our teachers have to go through equity training and learn how to deal with people that are different than them, but that's already happening, and that's not going to solve the issue as a whole. So what can we do to keep that from not happening and to keep us as a school district progressing?
Well, it is an issue. And I would say at core, it's a societal issue. And while there are many that look to the schools to solve all issues in the community, we can't do them all. What we can do is try our best to deal within our, in the part of the community that we can control to address it. The reason, I think I said earlier, that we redoubled our efforts this year because we weren't satisfied with the progress. It's an area that the board looks at and wants, and is part of our strategic plan, and it's something that we will evaluate. And we'll see if the program that we put in place this year, which was significantly expanded over past, is producing the results that we want. If it is, we will persist. If it isn't, we'll find a better one. And all I can say is, it's a work in process. Many of the issues are ones that unfortunately this society has managed to ignore and avoid for decades. And I think as a society, we're making progress. And I think if we do our work right in the school district, we can be leaders in helping to get to a better place.
That is a tough question. What we can do as schools in working with our school communities and bringing our school communities together, I think we can go back to our feeder patterns and in planning community activities that bring our diversity together and model acceptance and provide those opportunities to have those positive interactions will help build on the outside negativity that we can't help but feel the reach from coming in. I think Dr. Ward said it very well, that we can't control the community as a whole. We have our school community. So the interactions that we can provide in a safe environment, embracing our diversity and bringing folks together for positive relationships and experiences will be modeling that acceptance.
Thank you. What will you do to ensure that the teacher education is modified in order for it to reflect demands of modern-day K-12 classrooms?
I'm having a hard time hearing. He says, "project it out there instead of here."
What will you do to ensure that the teacher education is modified in order for it to reflect demands of modern-day K-12 classrooms?
So the actual teacher education that the teachers are receiving to reflect society's needs, is that the question? We work with universities, with our student teachers, and conversations that we have at the university level, helping to relay what the needs of our community as a whole. We have partnerships with communities where we are working with current college students that come into our school settings to see what the demands of the school settings are, and building those relationships and keeping those programs going to where, I mean, some have labeled it "grow your own" to where we're bringing college students in and showing them what it's going to take to be a teacher in North Kansas City schools so that we know that we have confident applicants when we go to field positions.
I would agree with all of that. Other things that we're doing, I happen to have the honor of serving on the Strategic Planning Group for the UMKC School of Education and being able to carry our needs to them as they plan what they're doing. I know there are others in the district who have similar roles with other teacher education groups in the area. So what, I mean, one of the challenges is to make sure that the teacher education is of the quality and addresses the needs like you're suggesting. And I think our personnel, PR personnel staff, who is on the campus doing the recruiting, is in contact with the liaisons on those campuses and telling them what needs, what we're seeking, and what we're hunting for, so that indeed we can have that preparation going on. And the second piece of it is that as we recruit teachers to come into our district, we bring around 100 in every year, part of the recruiting grid is to look at those kinds of issues and making sure that we're bringing in new teachers who carry a value system that aligns with the value system in the district. And if they don't, they don't get hired. So we've had, we've been successful. We've had the opportunity of hiring about 100 every year. Out of them, last time I heard, it was two years ago, we had 3,600 applicants. So that puts us in a position of being able to identify what we want, what we need, and find, hire as best we can in the inexact science of hiring.
Great questions and answers here. For my question again, given the amount of school shootings that have occurred nationwide, what precautions do you believe the district has taken or should take to ensure safety?
Glad you finally got down with an easy question. It's something we're concerned about. 20 years ago, we did not have school resource officers in any of our schools. 10 years ago, we didn't have a district person dedicated to building systems, I'm going to call it a protection, for lack of a better word. We didn't have cameras in all of our schools. We modified the entrances to every school so there was controlled access after the students got in in the morning. So we have taken many steps, and that last one, the modification of the entrances, cost the district millions of dollars. So we've taken steps to get there. Again, we can't prevent aberrant behavior by some of the adults in the community. We can protect our kids to the greatest possible extent. We also provide a training for all of our teachers and staff about what to do if unfortunately an event starts to occur. You may recall, we had an event at Oak Park High School, and it caused us to move all of the students out of the high school for their own safety. We got commendation across the board from even the media. Of course, they covered it, but anyway, even the media said it was handled well, and the public safety people that we partner with were very pleased with how it was handled. And so it's something that we've made a priority. We've invested resources in, and we feel like we're addressing it.
Couple of things I might add is the command centers that the high schools will all have here in the short future, where a resource deputy will be the first person that folks will see as they come in and check in through their, I forget the name of the little driver's license background check, but the little checking that they do to make sure that folks are clear to come through. And I know that there have been even some folks that have come in for assembly presentations that have not passed the background check, where they've got outstanding citations and things. And so those are even things that are, may seem minor, but it does come up, and it shows that our systems are working. I think a lot of this comes back to the trust that we can build in our communities. A lot of the things that are happening, sometimes people know that something's going to be happening, and to have that trust that they can tell someone and immediately take action. I know some of the schools have been on lockdowns before, where a student has reported to a teacher, and the teachers have all been trained immediately, recording, lockdown, check things out, and within a half hour, 45-minute period, then y'all clear has been given. And sometimes that can be kind of scary to go through, and I know there's texts that go out to parents, "Oh, my goodness, Mom, I'm in a lockdown." But it comes out to be an unfounded incident, but the trust factor was there, that someone felt comfortable enough reporting something to a teacher, and that it could be acted on, and the training was there to act quickly and swiftly and reduce the incidence of things getting out of control.
My question is, since you guys are entrusted with making some of the biggest decisions for our district, how often do you guys go to the schools and talk with students and teachers in the classrooms in person?
That varies from person to person and time. Activities, we all try to make it around to activities and talk to folks. Actually getting into the school during the school day, I find, is kind of a disruption. Teachers' planning time is very valuable, and to ask them to come meet me in the teacher's lounge or somewhere to talk on their off time is kind of infringing on the time that they have for instructional planning. But as a whole, I think the board is totally open for any type of interaction with any staff members. We do get contacted through email and things when issues do arrive, and the superintendent is able to route through the proper channels. But to actually go and say that I've talked to the teachers and staff members, I can't say that I've personally sat down with them, other than I talked with NEA a few weeks ago. I talk with them at board meetings, before and after board meetings, but to actually solicit their information on a personal level, I have not done that. I rely on the surveys and things that the district has reached out to gather information.
I agree with that. I've reached the conclusion that board members wandering around the schools are disruptive. Our job is to hire a superintendent, and in this case, his job, is to make sure that the schools run well. We have systems in place. We have plenty of ways for people to reach us. My web, my email address is posted on the district website. Anybody who wants to contact me can do so, and they'll get an answer, either from me or from someone that has more information and can more actively respond to the question. So I'm available here anytime and try and get it addressed as quickly and appropriately as possible.
Why, please, be the last two questions?
I have a two-part question, if that's okay?
Oh, sure.
I think I would say, no. Oh, okay, so my, first part of my question, kind of, because it's a half question, because I'm building off this question. So I understand that it's really important for our superintendent to be involved in our schools, which is cool, but do you think it's not important for the people who hire him and the people who make decisions for us and the people that are supposed to be looking at the diversity of our schools to not have a more hands-on approach, not only talking to teachers, but also with students? That's my first part question. My second part question is, what is one specific part in our district that you are most committed to improving? Sorry if that sounded mean.
I'm not sure. I, first question, I'm sorry.
I understand that it's important that you guys hire the superintendent, and he does a great job with a hands-on experience with kids and with schools and teachers, but do you think it's not important for you guys to have that same experience or to build the same connections with students that have been in your school district since you've been hired? Do you think your job is to have a hands-off approach?
I am available to every student in the district, every parent in the district, every patron in the district. There are 165,000 people in our district, roughly. That's the best estimate I've heard. We have 20,000 students. We have 1,500 teachers. We have 3,100 total employees. There is no way I have the time to physically shake every one of those hands, regardless of how much I wanted to. And so I try to find the ways to be most effective and reach out the most and to be available to any who have specific concerns they want to address. So that's how I, you know, deal with all of those, and that isn't to say I avoid the responsibility. I embrace the responsibility. I actually have my personal email address on the district website, not a district email address. That's, you know, I get 150 emails a day, so there's a bunch of people who know how to get me. And I try to respond to all of them. The boss I used to work for said, "If you don't return a phone call by the end of the day, you're late." So that's, after working for him for 17 years, that's kind of inculcated in my DNA at this point. The most, the second question is, the most important challenge right now?
No. It is...
What is one specific part of our school district that you are the most committed to improving?
And I would what?
Most committed to improving.
Most committed to improving. 100 on the MAP score.
On the MAP score or the APR?
APR.
Okay, okay. I believe that our job, or my job as a board member, is to monitor and uphold the policies that are in place for the district. The policies govern the behavior and the actions of the district, and our job is to hire a superintendent, and that superintendent is accountable to us for the things that are happening in the district. So when there are parents that are unhappy, it's the superintendent's job to make sure that those situations are addressed appropriately. And we have policies in place to have procedures... And we have policies in place to have procedures for those concerns to be heard. And we also have processes that can bypass, not bypass the superintendent, but go to the next level of appeal to a board when someone is unhappy with the superintendent's decision or any of his designated needs. Our job is not really to answer specifically to individual folks in the district because we are really not responsible for the decisions that are made in the district. The superintendent is. And we uphold the policies and the procedures and his actions through the board. And the second part of the question, what I think is the most important, student performance is always going to be important. But I think the most important thing in the next few years is becoming facility fiscal, to where we are using our facilities to the capacity, which I'm thinking we are nearing capacity, and finding ways that we can expand that and meet the needs of our community with the growing pains that's going to come with that because that's going to need to be some additional monies coming in also.
How will you make sure our school district's achievements are recognized or celebrated more?
I think we have a fantastic PR department that celebrates those. The Inspire videos that have taken place this year have won many nationally acclaimed awards. I'm constantly amazed with the posts that happen so frequently on the website. And I know within 30 seconds of the decision being made of the last day of school being made 31st on Tuesday night, it was on the website because someone was sitting right there in that boardroom and clicked the button to immediately post that to the website. So we do have a PR department that I think super succeeds the fact in getting the message out of our wonderful students. And it's easy to find the high school sports and activities that are so prominent. But I think just in the last two or three weeks, there was like a third or fourth grader that was highlighted on the website and his accomplishments. It had a video of him speaking that showed that we do have a large array of kindergarten, preschool through 12th grade accomplishments that we can celebrate. And the PR department finds ways to bring those out.
I agree. One of the challenges is how to get any message out from the school district. And it's one that I worry about, whether it's as simple as candidates being able to get a message out or as important as talking about what our students are doing. There is practically no coverage by the Kansas City Star of what goes on in our district. We have a school recognized as one of the top eight in the state, one of the blue ribbon schools identified by the US Department of Education. And it wasn't even worth a sentence at the Kansas City Star. That's the primary print media we've got. We do have the Gladstone Dispatch that does provide some coverage of what's going on. The only coverage you get from the electronic media is adverse. As far as celebrating our students and the accomplishments, it doesn't happen. The high school women's basketball team won state and it took two days for that to hit the Kansas City Star. The only way we can get the kind of message out that you're talking about and celebrate the amazing accomplishments of our students is by us generating the information and us pushing it out. It's sad, but that's where we are. We have twice the communication staff we had five years ago. And that's an effort to make sure we're doing everything we can to get those messages and to get that information out to our parents, to push it out to the people that get our insider, who are the people that have asked to be informed of what's going on in the school. There are a number of principals who do a great job of tweeting out information about what's going on in their schools and students that are doing amazing things. And we celebrate, we set aside time. We started this about 15 years ago. Where our meetings start with what's right. And we can celebrate, whether it's students or teachers, we can celebrate what's going on and start with the good news. Because it's so easy to get swamped in other things that boards have to address and we never get around to the good news. But we made it a priority and that's where we start every board meeting. And so we have sought every way we could find. And I would say, I can attest to the last, at least half dozen years, when we do our annual board retreat, we press the communications staff as to what else can be done. It's, to say we're satisfied would not be fair. To say we don't have people doing a better job than is done in most school districts would be an omission. As far as that or the information getting out is, we're teaching other school districts how to do it. They come to us and say, "How did you get that out? How did you get that information out? How are you getting your students featured?" And so I think we're doing a good job. But when we have 25 people show up for a candidate forum, that's going to affect 20,000 students, I'm worried. I would not be amazed if we had 7% voter turnout next Tuesday on something as important as what's, you know, is this enterprise serving the 20,000 students? So it's a challenge to get the information out. And it's a challenge to have somebody listen to it. And the final challenge is to have somebody act on it. I am very proud of our students and very proud of their accomplishments. And we use every avenue we can identify to celebrate those because the reason I serve on the school board is to create amazing opportunities for students. And when I hear about them, I think everybody else deserves to hear about them too.
Okay, do you guys want to do closing statements? Do we have anything for a closing statement? No, I'll close it now.
We get some questions from the audience?
Oh, yeah, we can do that. Can I have a poll and ask a question?
Sure. I might have more, but I'm not sure what the number. We talked a little bit about school security and, you know, what you might do. And I'm not sure, I haven't kept up on the number of where we are with SRO, with Student Resource Officers, SROs. And if we now at this point have them in every school? And if not, would you support efforts to put armed SRO at every school and then make sure you have multiple at high schools?
I'm going to talk from memory. And you shake your head yes or no, Dr. Clemens, if I'm misspeaking. But we have at least two resource officers at every high school. We have at least one at every middle school. And we have Rovers that are assigned to two to three elementaries that are in close proximity that can cover the elementaries. There is not one particular officer assigned to each of the 28 elementaries. There's 28 schools, there's not 28 elementaries. But there are armed resource officers in our buildings every day. And if there's not one in an elementary school, it is just a short phone call away as well as the local police department. We're lucky enough to be in the Gladstone as well as North Kansas City where they have their own police department there as well as Kansas City has been very responsive also. Armed resource officers, I think, is an important piece. They're trained. A lot of school districts are looking at army teachers or they have a gun in a locked box that you can go get out of the locked box in an emergency situation. And I don't see that any of those would be feasible in the emergency situations I've seen happen around the country. Having the trained officers in the building that work with the staff. Schools go through drills. I remember as a parent how disturbing having those lockdown drills were for my elementary age students. But through the years, it's become just as routine as a tornado drill or a fire.